All right, welcome. This is the Sherburne Select Board Meeting of Thursday, August 14th. It is 6:31 PM and I'm calling the meeting to order. All select board members are present. Marion, Neutra, Dan Sickel, and myself, Stephen Sire, in person. And then we've got Paul Durensis and Jeff Waldron, remote. Can we begin by having the Assistant Town Administrator read the executive session agenda, please?
Good evening. So we're meeting executive session tonight for three items. Item number one is meeting with town council in executive session pursuant to master law, Chapter 30A, Section 121a3, and subject construction versus DKM 449 Mass. 444, Rethink 2007 to discuss Richard Chanty versus the town of Sherburne, Hattaw. Middlesex Superior Court Civil Action 2181 CB01004 pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21a7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law of federal grid and A B clients, specifically the public records law. General law, Chapter 4, Section 7, 26, discuss privileged communications from town council regarding litigation. Item number two is a strategy session to prepare for contract negotiations to withdraw unvialed union employees pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21a2, the police lieutenant contract, and item three is pursuant to general law, 30A, Section 21a7, to comply with or act under the authority of general law, Chapter 30A, Section 22, to review the minutes of executive sessions in subject construction versus DKM 449, 444, 2007. Review of the executive session minutes of January 11, 2024, January 25th, 2024, February 8th, 2024, February 15th, 2024, February 20th, and February 22nd, 2024.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any amendments to the agenda? All right, hearing none. Can I get a motion relative to the agenda?
Prove it.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. All right, Dan?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And I might as well. And as the chair, I do declare that a executive session is necessary for the items as read by the Assistant Town Administrator, and I move that the select board enter into executive session.
Second.
All right, that's moved and seconded. Dan?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And I might as well. All right, so welcome, everybody, to the public session of the Select Board Meeting of August 14th. It is 7:18 PM. I apologize for our slight delay in getting to the public session. But first, I would like to ask the Assistant Town Administrator to read the public session agenda, please.
Good evening. After I read the agenda, the select board can vote to amend the agenda or approve the agenda. I've had no request for public comment tonight, and items can be taken out of order and topics not anticipated 48 hours advance may be added. Item number one is the consideration of ratifying the employment agreement between the town of Sherburne and Police Lieutenant Luke Tedstone. Item numbers two is consideration of various appointments. We have the Sherburne Arts Council, Holly Hope, for term to expire August 14th, 2028. She's a new appointment. For the Conservation Commission, there was one vacancy with two applicants, and that term would expire June 15th, 2028, and the applicants are Jonathan Hartson-Walker and Jonathan Tompkins. The other committee is the Farm Pond Advisory Committee, and Dale Yarborough for a term to expire June 15th, 2028, and he is a reappointment. Item number three is the consideration of a vote regarding the new law on the issuance of alcohol licenses. Item number four is the consent agenda, which is the TA Paywall, draft minutes of July 2025, and Select Board reports.
All right, thank you. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
I have a potential amendment, but we might want to save this for the next meeting because it is not crucial, but we got from Jeremy this proposal from Caballeros, Caballaro Science, and we have discussed this before, but I'm not sure at what point we need to make a decision, take a vote on this particular sign, or have we already taken the vote?
Well, you did vote that you wanted a three-stack sign.
Right.
So he's just bringing it in front of you to look at it and, I guess, to approve it, because you have a price there too, correct? It was like...
There is a price, yeah.
There is a price.
Right, but we might want to talk about some slight modifications.
Okay, then.
So maybe we'll put that off until after Jeremy's here.
Okay. I can do that.
All right, that sounds good. Any other potential amendments? If not, can I get a motion relative to the agenda?
Approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Dan?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And I might as well. All right, so item number one is consideration of ratifying an employment agreement between the town of Sherburne and Police Lieutenant Luke Tedstone.
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Dan?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And I might as well. SPDLT, is that Luke Tedstone?
Thank you, Lou.
Yes, that's me.
All right, well, thank you very much for your service thus far to the town, and we look forward to your continued service to the town. I don't know if there's anything that you wanted to say?
No, just thank you very much. I look forward to continue working with everyone and continuing to do what we do.
All right, excellent. Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thanks, take care.
All right, next item, we have consideration of Holly Pope to the Sherburne Arts and Cultural Council for a term to expire August 14th, 2028. That's a new appointment. I see Holly is on the Zoom, so usually, especially with the new appointments, we always ask if there's anything you wanted to say. Introduce yourself and kind of let us know why you're interested in being on the Arts Council.
Sure. My name is Holly Pope. I've moved to Sherburne with my husband six years ago. We raised two kids in Wellesley. This is right up my alley. I'm an artist and a former art educator. I've taught as an adjunct. I've run community art projects in various different venues and with different age groups, so I am well-versed in that whole language of community art projects. I'm a current board chair for nonprofit metals, metal arts school in Waltham, Massachusetts. And yeah, I'm excited to work with members of the community to further, you know, something that I love and have always loved being involved with, so that's me.
Great, well, thank you very much.
I move approval enthusiastically, and thank you for serving, Holly.
Enthusiastic second.
All right, enthusiastic motion and second. Dan?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I might as well. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think I might go now, is that okay?
That is absolutely okay.
Thank you very much. I look forward to working with whoever. Thank you.
And all right, so I was going to do this out of order, but we'll just stay in order. So next up is the Conservation Commission item, and I am going to recuse myself from this one because my wife, Courtney Eck, is co-chair of the Conservation Commission. I'm not sure that that really qualifies as a conflict of interest, but generally speaking, anything that has to do with CONCOM, I tend to keep myself out of it. So Vice Chair Marion Neutra is going to just run this particular agenda item.
Okay, thanks, Steve. I'm happy to do it. We have two applicants for a position on the Conservation Commission. I see one applicant, I believe Jonathan Tompkins is here. I do not see the other applicant, Jonathan Hodgson-Walker.
He sent me an email, he's out of the country.
Oh, okay. He won't be here tonight. Well, so I'd like to hear from Jonathan Tompkins first. We've read your little summary, but tell us a little more.
Yeah, so oddly enough, if this was any later, I would be out of the country also, so that's... I'm supposed to be packing right now. So I moved to Sherburne in 2018 with my wife, my two kids, my dog. We live across the street from the Barber Reservation, so we spend a lot of time there. And we moved from Boston to Sherburne mostly because of the open space. It reminded me a lot of home where I grew up, on the shore of Lake Ontario, and I grew up on 12 acres. We had a well and septic, so I was very well-versed with what I was in for, of lugging 50-pound bags of salt to soften the water, et cetera, and have always just loved being out in nature. And I've been fighting poison ivy and bittersweet at my house since I moved in. And yeah, I just have a passion for gardening and native plants and just trying to understand all things related to nature. And in my professional career, I've been in advertising since 2005, as a producer, also as a project manager. So just being able to connect with people and understand and explain complex things is just something that I've done for that long, so I think it would serve the commission very well and hopefully further that mission.
Thank you. You're accused.
I'm recused, I'm not making any comments.
So I'd like to just open the discussion with an appreciation of volunteers, especially for boards and committees like CONCOM that require a fair amount of work and a lot of learning, especially new volunteers who haven't volunteered before are particularly welcome, bringing fresh perspectives, such as your communication skills, which is always good. I should note that in general, if a candidate has had previous disagreements with the board or committee, which you have not, or the commission, and these disagreements were resolved, that does not disqualify an applicant, in my own view. One of the applicants, Jonathan Hodgson-Walker, who's not here tonight to defend himself, I have to note though, has an open unresolved issue with the CONCOM, an unresolved order of conditions. So in my view, that is a potential conflict of interest. And without knowing the details of that, it seems wise not to appoint Jonathan Hodgson-Walker until after that issue is resolved.
Marion, should I?
Yeah, but it doesn't disqualify him for future consideration. That's my view.
So a person who has disputes with the town or has got open issues with the town has full right to apply and be considered, and it is advisable that we not engage in any retaliation towards anybody who has ongoing disagreements. I myself, in looking at these two candidates, I would be concerned that one of the candidates would have to recuse himself from a number of issues, which means that he wouldn't be able to handle the full load of the commission, whereas the other candidate, to the best of what I've seen in his application, would have no requirement to recuse on the business before the Conservation Commission. And therefore, we could get more work out of the one applicant than we could get out of the other applicant. So if you'll allow me to sort of rephrase what we were discussing in terms of the amount of recusal that somebody has to make, I think I'd come out that we should appoint the individual who has no anticipated recuses and who can fully carry his share of the load of the Conservation Commission. So with that being said, I would move to appoint Jonathan Tompkins.
And I would second that also based on our penchant for trying to find new candidates for positions in town, so I like the fact that it's someone that's not already serving on two or three committees and we can get some new votes.
Before we vote. So thank you for being here, thank you for volunteering. Often when there are open positions on committees and boards, particularly CONCOM, which is a commitment of time, it can be hard to find people, so wonderful that there are two people who are interested, really happy that you stepped up and are interested in taking that on. Little bit of an unfair question, but I'd just be interested, and if the answer is too soon to know, but wondering, any thoughts on CONCOM? Things that, opportunities you see for new things they could be doing, or just as you look ahead to, if this motion is approved and you're appointed, sort of things you'd all do, directions you'd want to go, and if it's premature because you're a new volunteer, that's totally fine, but I'd be really interested in any thoughts.
No, I think that's a great question. Well, I think the biggest thing is making sure that people understand what the commission does. I think a lot of times it's like conservation, but what does that mean in practice? And I think it can sometimes be intimidating to maybe the layperson, so I think just kind of breaking that down in maybe more plain-spoken ways, whether that's through the newsletter, for the sustainability newsletter that goes out, there's certain things within that that I read all of that. I can't turn my brain off for my professional life, so when I see something coming from, whether it's the local soccer club and I'm looking at it and analyzing it, I'm like, why did you put the link that says unsubscribe and that's the only live link in the email? You know, things like that, just looking at actionable things to do immediately. But I think furthermore, I think that we're at a point, I think, generally within our world, that things are changing. We're seeing larger rain events that we maybe don't see on a regular basis, and I think that wetlands play a big part in mitigating that. I have a wetland that kind of meanders around my house, and I've gotten water in the basement before, it's not fun, but there's also creative ways to do that. I built a swale and a little bit of, as my dad would say, redneck engineering, and there's no water in the basement anymore. And so I think there's a lot of things that can be made a little more simple for people.
Thanks, that's great, thanks.
You can come to my basement in addition to being on CONCOM.
I wouldn't say it was a professional thing, and my wife kind of rolled her eyes when I was just kind of moving a little bit of earth up, but yeah, there's no water in that garage anymore, so.
I'm good.
Oh, and Steve, you're recused, that's right. So do we want to take a vote at this point? Is there anything else anyone would like to ask? Hearing nothing? I propose we take a vote. Can I have a motion?
I think there's already a motion, a second.
Oh, all right. So let's vote.
One question before you do that? What would be the term of office?
It's right here, June 15th, 2028.
Okay.
You don't have to stop in front of the...
Three years.
For term expires by June 15th, 2028.
So that motion should include that they...
Yep.
All right, so have the motion included.
Yeah, move to appoint Jonathan Tompkins to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire June 15th, 2028. Paul made the motions, Jeff seconded. Now you need a roll call.
Okay, need a roll call vote. Dan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Paul?
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 Couldn't hear you, Paul.
Aye, okay. And I might as well, thank you, Paul. So congratulations, Jonathan.
Thank you.
And thank you so much for serving. We'll see you again.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Your letter will be in the mail.
Okay. I'm gonna go get some kids to bed.
Where are you going off to?
What's up?
Where are you going off to? He said you were taking the country.
France.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, the Thirities, so southern France. I went there as a 15-year-old on a three-week exchange.
Just sounds like it's for fun rather than work.
It is.
Good, excellent.
Yeah, it is.
Have a great trip.
Bon voyage.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right, next we have Farm Pond Advisory Committee, Dale Yarborough, for a term to expire June 15th, 2028. That's a reappointment.
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved in second to Dan?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And I might as well. All right, item three, consideration of a vote regarding a new law on the issuance of alcohol licenses. And Paul, I think you're the one who brought this up, you probably have the most knowledge about it, so you want to tell us about it?
Yeah, so the governor signed a new bill, and the bill allows more flexibility with regard to alcohol licenses than had existed before. And the law seemed clear when I first read it, but I'm on a listserv with town councils around the state and listening to how all these different town councils are interpreting it, so it turns out to be a little more complicated than what's... what the advisory from the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission says. The first complicating factor is that it appears to be a developing consensus, and this is subject to change, as we're, all of us who are town councils are thinking about it. But it appears that the consensus that's building is that it should be accepted at town meeting and not by a vote of the local licensing authority, even though it reads local licensing authority can do all this. The sense is that there is a statute that says that communities should accept statutes by local acceptance through the local legislative body. Are we planning a special town meeting at all?
I have not heard of a special town meeting, so I think if this comes to town meeting, it would be in the spring.
Because that's kind of like the first complication. The second complication, well, it's not really a complication, but the part that's exciting many people is that communities who are at their limit for licenses, as we are, it allows us to essentially take a limited license and make it into a more broader license. In particular, it allows a restaurant, for example, who has a beer and wine license, to be able to come to the local licensing authority, which is us, and file an application to have that beer and wine license be made into essentially all alcohol, so that when you're at dinner at the restaurant, you can have beer, you can have wine, but you can also have a cocktail. And it's exciting, the state generally, because it allows for better service to the public, more choices. It is considered an economic driver, it apparently boosts the business model for establishments, all these good things. So I think it's worth the town accepting the statute and then seeing if anybody applies. Nobody applies, okay? But if there's interests in town or any establishment to want to serve and be more competitive, then they can submit an application. And at that point, we can make decisions about what fee to charge and all that kind of stuff. Separate from all of that, now that, as I say, all these town councils around the state are planning on it, I think we ought to do something for the Sherburne Sitco. I mean, we have a situation there that they put a lot of money and time to improving the site, everything from the roof over the gas dispensary, the new duck and donut structure there. It's considerable investment being made in our community. And we heard at a recent licensing hearing that the owner of that facility wants to have a full package store license. And I think that we should help him get that full package store license so that he can compete with other establishments in Sherburne and other establishments in the region. So if and when we have this town meeting, I'd like to also include specific provision for a full license for Sherburne Sitco. And again, the reasoning here is that, number one, we may not need a town meeting. I mean, when you talk to 50 different lawyers opining on things, I'm getting 50 different opinions about what all this means, and it appears that we should have a town meeting, settle these issues, but that might change. The economic impact on the community is all good, all the estimates from everybody I'm talking to, cities and towns across the state. It just helps businesses considerably, and I think we all know how hard it is to do business in Sherburne to begin with, so why not help those who are here already?
Paul, could you clarify something for me? You mentioned the business Sherburne something, and I couldn't catch the name.
He was saying Sherburne Sitco.
Oh, Sherburne.
But he means Sherburne Fuel.
Oh, Sherburne Fuel, okay.
Sherburne Fuel, yes.
So yeah, that sounds fine to me too, but this law is about alcohol on premises, alcohol consumption on premises, right? So Alex is here, how does that work? Can you help me with that? I thought on premises meant consumption, purchase and consumption on premises, like a restaurant. Alex, you're muted.
Can't hear you, Alex.
Your mic might be physically muted because you're not, your Zoom account is not muted. Your mic might be physically muted because you're not, your Zoom account is not muted.
Hear me now?
Yes.
Turn it up a little, Alex.
Sorry, I, I, um, I didn't think that was the case, Marion. Maybe I'm dead wrong. What I, you know, what I've read is that it's a it's, it applies to off premise as well as on premise. So maybe I'm, maybe I'm dead wrong.
Well, I just don't, yeah, I just want, want, want clarification because throughout this law, it has in parentheses at every moment, on premises, on premises.
I, I had the same question Marion did. I'm, I'm looking at the guidance that came from A B C C and just as Marion said, it references on premises about a dozen times at each point when it indicates the change in status of a license.
Paul, do you know the what's meant by the law?
So again, there's, there's a lot of different legal opinions and it seems to be changing. The A B C C is not the last word on this. This, this is actually a statute. Uh, the A B C, that, that was the A B C C's cover announcements. And then they withdrew it and issued a corrected version of their announcement. So they've gone through a couple of iterations, having made a mistake the first time around. But I think the final it's, this is evolving fast. But I think the final position is on premises for this particular statute. That's why I want to I want to do something for the Sherburne Fuel in case they're not covered. So that no matter how it finally ends up, that it would cover both situations. On premises, off premises.
So, so Paul, just to make sure I understand that that's essentially proposing, independent of the new law, that we would go through the same process as has been done in the past?
If, if that's where it all ends up, yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, so I guess the question, what action do we take right now?
So right now, the, it looks like we're gonna need a town meeting in every case. I mean, that seems to be the consensus of most of the lawyers who have looked at it, but not all. I want to let that sort out a little bit as the lawyers talk about it. By lawyers, I mean the Town Council Association. Let the, let, let that kind of mellow a little bit before we figure out something. Because there's always there's always the idea, hey, why don't we try it and, and, and see, and if we get challenged, we get challenged, so on. On the other hand, we want to do it right, and we certainly don't want to put the the license holders through anything unnecessary. So right now, I'm looking for a commitment that we would do what we can to get expanded license capability for both on premises and off premises. And do it in the easiest, most efficient way.
Can't argue with that. And certainly we support our businesses, hundred percent. So maybe we'll get more clarification and then we can actually vote on something.
My apologies. It's just too many lawyers in the world.
We don't have a good reputation for doing things in the most efficient way either. Other than that, I think we're good.
All right. So then I guess for now, um, we, I don't know, Diane, if you want to just make a note of, uh, having a placeholder on the town meeting warrant for this? And, um, Paul, if, if there is more clarification before then, that, that this is something that can be handled outside of town meeting, I guess just let us know, but until then, we'll just assume that this was going to be a town meeting warrant.
Yeah, even while we were talking, there was another opinion just came in on, on the listserv. So it's, it's a hot topic right now.
Yeah, I mean, I guess one question would be, should we ask our town council or is it just there's no point in even spending that money right now?
I given the fact that there's so many town councils looking at it now and, and, and all of them are competent, why don't we let them sort of sort it all out before we spend our own money?
Sure.
It's a freebie.
Um, all right. So can you keep us updated on that?
I will, yes.
Thank you all. I'm grateful to see this on the agenda. I'm grateful for your consideration.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, thanks for coming tonight, Alex.
Appreciate it, Alex. Paul, can you make a motion on item four, please?
I don't, I don't.
Consent agenda.
Move the proposal on the consent agenda. All right.
Thank you. I have a kind of a sad select board report. We're really, um, I've been leading the Boy Scout troop for probably, I don't know.
Wait, wait, Jeff, we haven't, we haven't actually voted on the consent agenda yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We, nobody's even seconded it yet.
I, I, I got ahead of myself.
All right, moved in second for the consent agenda approval. Dan.
Aye.
Marion.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
All right, select reports. Go, Jeff.
Yeah, we're, we're below critical math for the Boy Scout troop in town, unfortunately. We have about five scouts. When I started doing it twenty-five, thirty years ago, we had about eighty scouts. So there just aren't, there's so many sports and other programs going on that we're trying to decide where we're going to end up with the Boy Scout troop in town, because they do a lot of things on Memorial Day, Veterans Day, and help out at different town functions. And they also do Eagle projects around town that benefit the community. But they're just, you know, there's too few boys. It, it doesn't have to be boys, but there's several girls in, I think Navy, for example, has a girl in one of the Boy Scout troops. So, um, we're trying to figure out what we're going to do. And coincidentally with that, I had a long conversation with Zach because there's also a in scouting America, there's, uh, organizations that are called Explorer, Explorer Scout units, which really are typically led by, um, uh, E M T or fire departments, because they're, they tend to focus more on rescue type operations. And they, they launched one in the fire department three or four years ago. In fact, Sean's son was pretty actively involved in it. But they disbanded also too. They just haven't had the scouts, enough scouts to support it. So I just an update, nothing definite yet, but we're trying to figure out. We, we'll probably renew for one more year and just see, you know, how many boys we are able to get. Coincidentally, we've been holding our meetings jointly with Dover, because Dover is in the same situation. They have probably about the same number of scouts that we do, just because there's not, not as much interest. The one, the good thing about partnering with Dover is they're in the same school district, so the boys all know each other. The bad thing is they're in different counties, so it's a completely different, uh, Boy Scout district. So they're not in the same Boy Scout council that we are. So that's just a sort of a status, but I think it's kind of a national status, you know, that scouting is really just fallen by the wayside in terms of popularity.
What about Holliston? You know, how's Holliston doing?
Say again?
What about Holliston? How is Holliston doing?
Holliston actually has two troops. They have two troops, believe it or not. So we could consider partnering with them if we want to. We haven't gone that far yet.
Is there anything we can do, Jeff, to support?
I don't think so. I, I just think that, you know, we've been recruiting, we know, we had, um, you know, Pine Hill School population is also about a third below what it was when my voice went through. So there's fewer elev-, you know, there's three sections of fifth grade that would then usually it's sixth grade when you join Boy Scouts. So there's three sections of fifth grade with around thirty boys, not that we can't recruit girls. So I think it's just a, a nature of so many different activities that are going on at the high school that didn't exist before, like fencing and, and crew teams. I think I mentioned to you before, we won the state hockey championship in two thousand twenty-four, and I went to most of the games. But it's now the Dover Sherburne Weston Hockey Team, because in order to get sixteen ice hockey, varsity ice hockey players, we needed three towns to come up with sixteen boys for varsity hockey. So it's just a nature of sort of changing demographics. So, well, I'll keep you posted. We're doing what we can. We're having a leadership dinner, uh, the twenty-fifth of August at, at the fireside. If I'm, I'm, I'm currently in New Jersey, but if I'm in town, I'll go to the dinner.
I have a couple of select board reports.
All right, do it.
Uh, one is the land acquisition committee met, uh, last week and, uh, discussed various things. But one thing that, uh, we probably want to pick up on at some point is, uh, the, the question was raised, should the land acquisition committee continue as a committee? Actually, it was the chair who, Frank, Frank Jenkins, who raised that question. And, uh, there was a discussion about what the land acquisition committee could still be doing, should still be doing. And I think this is for another day, but I think is, is worth discussing. One thing that we agreed on is that there's a need to have a good town database of all the chapter sixty-one lands and the lands with various kinds of conservation restrictions, to have it in all one place, along with good maps, so that someone is watching over those lands that are not, that may be, uh, conserved but not permanently conserved. Because when changes come up or restrictions expire, uh, the town needs to be, have, have a heads up far enough in advance to do something about it if they so choose. So that's just an, an issue, what, where that, where that database and that work should reside. And if in the land acquisition committee find, but then we need to rethink their, their, their role. And the second town.
Before you leave that?
Oh, sure.
Can I just make a comment on that?
Sure.
The land acquisition committee is actually a lifesaver when we have a sixty-one A or sixty-one B issue, where we have a limited time to figure out, is this property that we want to buy or not buy? We get to act quickly. We have deadlines. And we need something or somebody who's looking at the town as a whole and able to convene a meeting. So even if they are quiet for six months or a year, and then suddenly we have an opportunity to buy something fabulous, we need a group like that that would swing into action, help give us basis for a decision.
Yeah, in fact, because I was on it until Mary Wolf threw me off because I was on advisory at the same time, but they, they already have a database, and Marion was very engaged. They already have databases of all the different properties. We started out doing the twenty acre and above ones. And then when I got involved, we were doing the ten to twenty acre sites.
Right, they haven't carried that on, so that needs to be completed.
Yeah.
That's right, and.
That's a database. You don't have to have them get engaged when something comes up a sixty-one B. They, you know, the intent was to have the data already live. It can be refreshed.
Yeah, that's right. Uh, another question was, where should that database live? That is, this is a volunteer community that has turnover. And, uh, you know, we need some place in the town where the database is, is available and always there. So it, it's, more discussion is needed on that, I think. And then my other, uh, select board report is that, um, the North Sherburne Water and Sewer District Interim Commission has been meeting. And they're meeting again on August twenty-first, uh, with Toll Brothers to get kind of just an overview of the process that Toll Brothers is going through with state approvals. But also, um, they've been discussing, uh, the, the process by which they actually will take over the district. And it, it's actually a business that has to be set up. And they're trying to get educated on that score because, you know, they're environmental scientists and people like Steve and I, who are, are, are not expert in this.
And we're just temps.
Right. We're just here to report back to the select board, actually. But, um, the, the issue came up of keeping records of what the interim commission does. And we have someone taking, uh, minutes who doesn't have time to continue doing it. So the chair of the commission, of the interim commission, I should say, asked me to look into what town support there might be for a little bit of administrative support, at least to keep their records, take their minutes, et cetera. Because it will be a, a legal entity. So I'm, we don't need to discuss it now, but I just want to throw it out there, that that's a need that, that may be coming up, and we should think about how we can handle it.
Just a thought, Marion, that some of my towns have a, what's called a floating secretary. Then we'll go to whatever meeting is needed. So it's not somebody who's assigned to, like, the Conservation Commission and goes to every Conservation Commission meeting. But we'll be going to whatever meeting isn't covered, cover that particular meeting.
I think that's a very good approach, actually. It, it, and we should look into whether we have a, a note taker or, you know, part-time secretary now serving any committee that might want to take on a role like that.
I have, Amy Davis basically does the minutes for the select board. Um, she may, I could check with her, but she also does the minutes for the school committee, so I'm not quite sure. Then there's, um, the admin down at the Conservation Commission, Deb Zuckus. She does the minutes for not only CONCON, but I believe she does them for the planning board. She may be interested.
Okay.
So we could put it out in the paper. Maybe get some sort of a.
Do they, do they record the meetings, Marion? Because you know, with Zoom recordings now, minutes are sort of not as necessary, because the A I tool within Zoom can actually produce minutes that you could edit.
Uh, right, that's one way to do it, but.
They, are they meeting virtually or on Zoom or are they?
We're meeting in person, hybrid on Zoom as well.
Okay, so that, at least if they were recorded, someone offsite could do it more easily.
Uh, right. That's true. Um, but I think it, it's better to have, you know, the same person at this point.
Yeah.
Maybe not, uh, uh, AI Chat G P T doing the minutes.
Almost every company I'm working with is using those A I tools. Or professional.
Yeah, some, somebody has to ride herd on it, you know, somebody has to check the minutes against what was actually said. Okay, anyway, I, we don't have to make a decision on that. I just wanted to put it out there.
There are professional companies out there too that will do it just based, listening to the Zoom meeting.
Right. Okay, we can talk about it some more.
Okay.
I have another report, Stephen, if.
Yeah, go ahead. Oh, wait, are you done, Marion?
I'm done, yes, thank you.
Are you finished, Marion? I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no, I am finished, thanks.
I think we all saw the email, but we should celebrate that the library punch list is, um, with Sean's dedication, the library punch list is now completed this week.
Yeah.
Wow.
That means the library is officially finished. Never have to do anything to it ever again.
Your gut punch list, I think we call. Your gut punch list, I think we call it, but but all the unresolved issues are now resolved. And I meet, I've still been going to the library trustees meetings because I'm still representing the select board in the meetings, legal meetings with regards to the action, potential action against the architect. So I attend the library trustees meetings and the subgroup on litigation with potential integration regarding architect.
All right, any other select board reports? All right. If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Yay. You didn't have any, you didn't have any grants or seps tonight, Paul, but you you pretty well.
All right, anyone want to second that?
Second.
All right, moved in second and Dan.
Hi.
Marion.
Hi.
Jeff.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
And I'm I as well. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much.